raising your hand. Or some other appropriate measure. All right. Uh, I think it's explained to, I put it on Facebook, but it's been on the, on the town website page as well, but there, there was several cases of COVID in the townhouse and we thought it best just on a, out of an, but as a caution to just zoom our meeting this evening. Uh, it'll be a, a shorter meeting. Some of the items we really don't need to deal with tonight. We can deal with next week or the week after. So I begin by, uh, is Pete Signorelli on for?
He is all right.
Okay. Uh, Pete, where are you?
Got unmute Pete.
Got unmute, yeah.
There he is. I see him. He's still muted.
That power?
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. Sorry about that.
Good evening Pete. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone.
Uh, we're in the process of hoping to at some point, uh, make a decision about our fire station. And we had several questions. Uh, maybe John, you could, uh, go over it for a minute.
One of the things we were looking, did you hear me?
Yep.
We're looking at it during a meeting last week and I was showing Don a Google Earth representation of the front. It seems to me that one of the overriding concerns is the lack of space, equipment-based space. I know Don's been concerned in the past about safety in terms of separation from the truck to the equipment on the side. You know, this has been going on for a year, Don, correct?
Right.
And one of the things we're looking at is that it's a factor of the size of the vehicle. And just, you guys considered a lot of different options. And I'm wondering, have we talked about making a bay just for that big vehicle? We've been kicking around the idea, do we need a second tanker truck at all? If we don't, and the biggest vehicle we have is the tanker, should we just go ahead? Make a bigger bay to the right and therefore the bays that are in the middle possibly are okay for the vehicles we have. Then secondly, some of the things you've talked about has been lack of space for the personnel, meeting rooms, changing rooms, storage of, uh, change out equipment, things like that.
Right.
All those things don't require the brick structure we have. We've kicked around the past and the Butler building in the, in the back basically for meeting, et cetera. If you look at the structure as just an equipment structure from the front, do we have the opportunity by perhaps changing the roof line of taking care of all the equipment we need, we need, we have by just straight in pursuit of the base? And I don't know if that was one of your solutions. I don't think it really was. But honestly, that was like, I don't know, Don, seven or eight years ago, we looked over this report. Oh, maybe it's, maybe it's time to really just say outside the box, you know, you brought up some key points to us. The chief has brought up some points and we've done some tours of other places as well. Maybe they've said, hey, we take the best and forget the rest. Maybe we have a different solution. And Dan, did I summarize it right or?
Yeah, yeah. And we've, we've taken some action. We've, we've put the ventilation system in, we fixed the ventilation system. We, we're getting a new generator. We did some electrical work in there to bring that up to code and that type of thing. So. We're looking for an easy, we're looking for an easy and cheap out.
Understood. I mean, and we hear that all the time. We get it. Um, it's difficult to make anything useful out of the existing bays when it comes to storing vehicles. They're really tight. Um, our typical thing for something like this is to build new bays alongside the existing building and renovate the existing building for whatever else can fit.
And I think that's kind of what we were going for. We looked at the two bays in the middle saying, okay, maybe those are for smaller trucks, if you will. A new bay to the right where we have an older, smaller bay, but we say, okay, fine. We blow that out to right and that's the bear vehicle. And Don even said, you know, maybe to the left as well where the offices, which is to be honest, pretty darn small.
All right.
And needed to be upgraded anyhow. You take that area there, if you look at the size of it, it's a good not eighteen, twenty feet across there. You know, you've got a, a good area there for, you know, a structure going down that way. And now you've got two larger bays left and right. And the smaller ones down the middle are announced for the smaller vehicles, the brush truck, et cetera. And now we put the offices, whatever, where we do honestly have quite a bit of land out back. You know, we bought up to all municipal property pretty much on, on the rear portion. There's no problem putting training rooms out there. We're not talking building out of mahogany or something like that. We have a lot of options for the building out the back.
Well, I had the screen, the, the plan on my screen in front of me. I'm looking at it as we're talking. Um, what you're calling the bigger bay to the right really isn't big enough according to today's standards.
I think to summarize what we're saying is though, if you look at the front of the facade, you've got three bays and then the offices. If we could do something in the front of the building where we can incorporate four bays across the front. And if you're looking at the building, the small bay on the right, we have town property over to the right more. And then over to the left, we could go that way. Could we fit four modern sized bays right there in the front using that same structure or expanding just a little bit further if we have to?
Right. And Peter, what I was saying is the bay to the right, you're quite right. It's too small for whatever. But we have, I'm looking at the footprint and the footprint is appropriate for putting a big bay there to the right. You know, saying the two smaller bays in the middle are appropriate for the smaller vehicles, the brush truck, et cetera. Not for the tanker, not for engine one. So we build a new bay to the right, perhaps a new bay to the left, and those are our large vehicle.
Okay.
See that, if you look at the front of it, you say, well, yeah, if you ignore the door part, the footprint easily accommodates two large bays left and right. Yes, the roof is changed, but we're staying on the same footprint.
And it'd be good to stay at that end of the site because exiting that end of the site works better with trucks than it does the southern end of the site. So I, you know, I buy that. But yeah, we certainly can look at all of this and see, you know, what can be done.
Well, you, you think it's feasible to do that?
Um, without studying it, you know, just looking at it right now, what you're talking about, I can see how it might work. Yeah. I mean, it would just be a, you know, a matter of crunching through, you know, the different spaces and see what we end up with.
Okay. So how, how would we proceed on that?
Um, it'd basically be another study, I guess. Uh, to kind of, um, go off the last study we did for you. It's come up with a new scheme for this new layout.
It would seem like you are, you have some of the data you can already work with already. So the, I think Don is trying to get like, hey, how much you want?
What's our next action plan?
That's, yeah, right. So.
Um, I'd have to talk it over with Bob Mitchell, uh, my associate. Um, but then we can get back to you. It could just be an amendment to our old contract or another brand new contract either way. Um, but we can certainly get back to you with that, you know, quickly.
And just email the proposal to me, uh, Pete.
Okay. All right, sure.
Selectment.
Yeah. And I think just what we were looking for is like a happy medium, you know, on something, you know, nothing too extravagant. You know, like a knockdown and rebuild, like some of the models were, and something that, you know, would meet our needs for the, you know, the foreseeable future.
No, I get that. Sure.
Chief, did you want to add anything to this or?
The only thing I would add is that the four bays up front would be ideal if they were deep enough. Um, I, I said something about five bays, course to one bay in the back where the tanker is now would be eliminated. Um, so that'd be my concern of fitting the trucks in the newer apparatus. Um, that'd be one key thing I'd be looking at.
And I think, uh, Peter made it echoed our point we looked before that exiting onto North Road is, I think, our optimum plan, you know, rather than trying to turn the vehicle around and rapid response, drive straight out and boom, you're right on the way.
Yep.
Also exiting onto the north end of North Road, because the southern end of the site is problematic. It's too steep.
Right. Okay. Yep.
Okay. All right. So you'll, you'll connect with Bob and we'll get some kind of proposal to go from there.
Absolutely. Happy to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Good night, everybody.
Where, we're a little bit, we're a little bit ahead of schedule is, is Josh and Juanita on?
I thought I saw Juanita.
Yes, Juanita is here.
Hi, Juanita. Okay. Uh, so, uh, just to recap, so you met with us on March 28th and we had our some Hollid Hill Road issues. And then we met with our attorney at town council on April 4th. And we asked our town council to provide us with, uh, an opinion of what, where we were at this. And April 19th, she did, I believe we sent it along to you.
Yes, about that. Um, it does appear that you received it via email on the 19th, but you didn't seem to forward it. Actually, it looks like you didn't even mail it out to the 27th. So I received it just this past Friday. Is there any reason why it would have taken so long to get to me?
Probably because we wanted to first to sit down and review it. You know, we met on the 26th to review it. And so we sent out, you know, the 19th where we met, we got it on that day. So just the time for us to review it and decide what to do.
So if you don't mind, I'm just going to take a second and let's take a step back here because at the back of the last meeting that we had, I believe that you guys said it was just going to take a week or two. So we had a recent write-up that looks like in the town paper in which I was referred to as disgruntled. And frankly, I thought I was quite cordial.
I thought so too.
Right. So, you know, back in November, when we started this journey with the town, the town administrator had agreed to come up to speak with us to address our concerns. Not only did he never show up, didn't even have the cost, you know, common decency to let us know that he wouldn't even be coming. When Joshua Markham went up to go speak to Mr. Markle, Mr. Markle had the audacity to yell at him. So fast forward to March where we actually came to see you. I believe at the back to back meeting, I was told a week or two. Um, you're saying you met on the fourth and yet when I requested an update on the 11th, nothing, actually just crickets. It required me actually reaching back out again on the 18th saying that I needed to be on the board meeting so that I could discuss the lack of follow-through. So that seems to have actually gotten things moving because that's when we actually see this communication. We see you finally moving things out. But I think for me, at the end of the day, what this really feels like is either a blatant disrespect for the time for myself and my family or in a netness on the board's part. I'll let you discuss. But
What was that again?
Your recent write-up, Mr. Davenport.
I'm sorry.
This has not been an open, transparent collaborative process that encourages citizens' participation. I feel like you've ran us around, stonewalled. I feel like I have banged gaslit and it's not appreciated. So if we're going to talk about disgruntled, perhaps those are the reasons why I may come across as disgruntled. Yes. So let us go into your response to me. Would you like to proceed?
Yeah, but basically what our attorney has said is that it's a private legal matter.
Okay, let's discuss this. So in this, uh, letter that you had sent to us, which is not you saying anything to us, it's your legal counsel responding to you, which you then forwarded to us, and that is not what we requested. So first point, we talked about the effect of this act was established that common convenience and necessity no longer require such way to be maintained in a condition reasonably safe and convenient for public travel. And the town shall not have, no longer be bound to keep such way in repair. So can you explain to me how this was established?
Where, where is that?
In the letter that you provided, uh, it would be in the very first paragraph where it says the effect of this act.
How was that act established?
No, how was it established that the road was no longer needed to, for common convenience nor lo, no longer required that such way be maintained in a condition reasonably safe? How did that, how was that decided?
That was decided back in 2006 by the Board of Selectmen.
How? How did they decide this? They just decided one day that they just weren't going to maintain the road?
No, I think there's a, there's a quite a bit of paperwork behind that. I wasn't on the board then, but I think there's a quite a bit of paperwork. There was a hearing, I believe, on it. Uh, the highway.
We're not sure how it was established.
No, I am sure how it was established. I'm telling you, there's paperwork behind it. I don't have it in front of me. I happily will send it to you. I'll do it tomorrow.
I think that would be good, Mr. Davenport, because that is part of what was requested, I believe, at the end. We wanted the documentation that you had to support what you were declaring. So let's move on. Where it says a dispute has arisen between two subsequent, sequential encurnabutters to Howlett Hill Road, Craig Schweitzer and Joshua Markham, who live across the road from each other. That is not correct. Craig Schweitzer does not live off Howlett Hill Road. Craig, the Schweitzers live in Monson.
They own the property. Do they own the property across the road?
They do, but they don't live there. That is an inaccurate statement that you have in that document. So then we get to the town has no ownership interest in the road and his distinct, oh, I'm sorry. Jumping a little bit ahead, specifically obligations and rights to repair and maintain Howlett Hill Road have arisen. And that is actually not correct. What has arisen is the fact that this is being used as a logging road. This has nothing to do with repair and maintenance of a road. It has everything to do with it being used as a logging road.
Excuse me, wasn't your concern when you came before the board that there was some damage to the road?
There was a berm and barrier removed by a logging company. Correct. That's why I came. It's being used as a logging road. A logging company did that. You're absolutely correct.
And they have a permit to do logging there.
I'm not aware of that. Do they have, do you allow, um, public ways?
That they have a forestry.
They have a forestry plan. I believe that was submitted to you too. You should have that information from what I, the email records I saw, saw that you received that.
Okay. So let's talk about this then. So we're talking about how the, you're saying that the town has no ownership interest in road and has distinguished any liability for care and/or maintenance. So just so that I'm clear, are you to tell me that Hampton is the one that actually insulted the clover's on Howlett Hill, of which there are many? Are you saying that this court case actually removed your liability to maintain? I mean, we don't even know if those clovers will withstand repeated weight of logging equipment going up and down. So are you telling me that there is no liability, but the court released you from all of that?
Uh, our attorney believes that, yes.
And that's, that's the way it reads to us.
Believe that. So, okay. So then let's get into where we say that based on his filings in court, Mr. F. Markham owned the property on both sides of the subject road and thus in quotation owned. Why is owned in quotations? What does that mean?
Cause he sold it.
Yes, but usually when you put owned, you wouldn't put it in quotations.
Cause at the time he owned, at the time he owned all the parcels back there, he no longer owns all the parcels.
Upon the town's discontinuance, it appears that right to maintain the road became his, appears. What documentation do you have to support this appearance that it became his? Because you can't just do something and not have the proper procedure and documentation to follow this. So that's what we've been asking for. Guys, it's repeatedly actually, and all sorts of different words, and it still doesn't seem to be sticky. So maybe you can help me understand what supports this because all I've seen in the documentation that you've provided is references to it being a public way that is not a logging road and nothing that actually shows that you're not the owners. Just what somebody's legal opinion may have been, not that it's fact, just somebody's opinion. Is that correct?
That's our lawyer's opinion, yes.
So I have to say, after going through all of the documents, and I'm new here, I've come across, um, confusing dates and I'm hoping you can provide me some clarity because I'm still not understanding how we got here. The Markham's purchased what was approximately 200 acres from the Thrushers in 1950. That's the data on file. You can look it up for the exact date yourself. That is 56 years of paying taxes to the town of Hamden. The Markhams then decide to retire in Hamden in 2005. That's when the building permit was issued. Then in the subsequent year in 2006, the board elected to discontinue their maintenance. Surely that cannot be correct. I mean, does that sound right to you? I mean, that's hard to believe. You can understand, Mr. Davenport. I mean, the Markhams were in their eighties or years old. I confirm with my partner and that's pretty heavy stuff for me because by all appearances, it's as though the town abandoned two longstanding contributors, leaving an elderly couple, couple to what looks like then for themselves. Given our large populace of over 50, I would say if it could happen to the Markhams, well, it could happen to anyone in Hamden. So what I would like to say is, given everything discussed today, I would like to formally request all town official communications related to Howlett Hill. This is to include, but not limited to emails, both professional and personal, those with decision-making responsibility around town roads, communications with other town departments, communications with other local state government entities such as Monson and the town of Stafford Springs. And I would like to thank Mr. De Sibilia, if I pronounced that correct, for his recent write-up in the town paper in which he confirms these communications are subject to public disclosure.
Yeah, you can request all those through the town clerk. She's a records keeper and ask me, informal, and you have to detail what you want. But, um,
Perfect.
Yeah, there, there's certain requirements to it and there's certain timeframes for that. So.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Rivas. So I think that about covers everything here. I look forward to working with you guys further as we go through all of the documentation and the history of Howlett Hill and who's been involved.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question, Juanita. What is your resolution to this? What is your resolution to this? What are, what are you looking for from the town?
Um, I would like to protect a town road that's up here in this beautiful nature preserve that makes sure that it is safe for my child to get to school. It's about one of the only things my taxes afford me use of the town um, that I don't have to pay for, that I might taxes cover. Um, and that's being threatened. So I would like my daughter not to be holding on for dear life when we go take her to the bus stop.
Okay.
I would like you guys to take this seriously and not run us around because.
Just for, just for clarification, when you moved to the house, moved to the property on Howlett Hill, you were understanding that it was a discontinued maintenance road though, correct?
I was understood that it was a discontinued maintenance. I was not under the understanding that the town had said that somebody else could go do whatever they wanted to that road. Because you would have had to sign off on any cutting plan.
I believe the D O R signs on.
Well, up here. So I'm sure there's got to be some sort of permit for a road adjustment for logging activity.
All right.
All right. Have a wonderful evening.
Excuse me?
And have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. The next item on our agenda is, uh, we're going to forego the highway superintendent because, uh, there's no money from the state and he's, uh, going to write up, uh, give us his proposals, uh, how to use that money for the roads.
Yeah, Don, I just, I talked to Mark today. I think he can get that done. We can hear it before the town meeting next week. It's not going to take, you know.
All right.
If you want to jump on soon as we can, because a lot of towns have a lot of money. It's gonna be, no, seriously, the, the big players are going to be booked pretty soon.
Yeah, you're not going to be able to get the, the labor to do it. Uh, Angela, town meeting warrant motions and selectmen's assignments.
Is this in the OneDrive anywhere, Bob? I'm looking. I don't see it.
It is under, uh, selectmen. Uh, and under the folder that we normally use. Um, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. No, it's, it's, uh, under town meetings.
Okay.
And then, uh, there's a subfolder there for 2022 and a subfolder called ATM. Okay.
Yep.
Do you want me to bring it up on the, uh, shared screen and go through it that way or?
I don't really see a lot of, I mean, Don, I mean, honestly, these are pretty straightforward. No trucks, no whatever. It's.
Just need to know who's gonna, who's going to, uh, present what motions is all we need to know.
Pretty much. Who did the time report last year? Was you, you done?
Yeah, I think so. Beginning just did that in the beginning and.
Yeah. So Don, then it's advisory for the budget. Carry you bills can be moderator. Gee, golly. Who wants, uh, who wants the revolving funds?
You did a revolving fund. You're familiar with that.
Yeah, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have enterprise right after that. So.
Yeah.
Craig, you want revolving?
Sure.
Okay.
Article four.
Sure.
Four.
Enterprise, enterprise is, uh, John.
Right. And then Doug will have community preservation.
I don't have duty of reservation.
Conservation Ted, you good with conservation? You're, uh, Judy.
Yeah, probably be me.
Okay.
What number is that?
That's a seven.
Seven. Seven.
Um, Don, you want highway?
Hey, hey, highway, okay.
Okay. And then Ellen will take library. Then we got the two, then we got the two stipend things. Um, I'm happy with, what do you think? The assessor should do theirs and Eva could do hers.
I think so.
Fair, yeah. Eva or Dick, they can decide. They can, you know, rock, paper, scissors, whoever wants to do it. And then the two assessor ones can be, uh, norm, you would think. We're back to school. School resource. I was permitted there when it started. Municipal light plan.
John, do that with Greg to municipal.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, uh, I'm trying to keep up with you. Uh, John, you're doing the school.
Go resource.
I'll do resource and then Craig can do, uh, municipal light plant. Firefighter, Don, you were.
I'll do firefighter.
Okay.
I'll do the next one. It's, no, next one is, uh,
VSO.
Again, huh?
Yep, yep.
I'll do eighteen.
They got more motions than we have done.
Let's see, uh, eighteen, we may.
Who's doing seventeen?
The assessors. That's the veterans exemption.
Okay.
No.
Uh, let's see what I got here. We got nineteen, the citizens will, somebody from there will do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then twenty advisory committee.
Yeah, three advisory motions after that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I saw a comment today that if we're concerned about how we're doing the town meeting in the Zoom protocol, you know, is there going to be a requirement for a ballot type thing? I know Rick. Send an email about that.
Two thirds of majority and secret ballot.
Yeah.
I know Eva is aware and assume I'm gonna, she's gonna plan how that'll be done.
Okay.
You're gonna, you, are you guys gonna meet Thursday? I, I.
I don't think it's a bad, I, I don't think it's a bad idea based on, like I said, just look what happened this week. Where do we stand? Do we have the right personnel in place for, are we going to head out masks? Will, uh, Ed Herb be able to do a full spring because he's going to have to spray after the town meeting before school starts again on Tuesday as well? Um.
All right. Well, I, like I said, I, I'm going to be out of town at a funeral and, uh, I gotta be back to go to the screening committee soon. But if you guys want to meet, you know, they'll give you a quorum and then you can have me with the.
We can do it at nine or 10 a.m. If that works for you, Don.
No, I gotta, I gotta leave early in the morning.
Down the road.
Most of the day. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. We'll share your thoughts with Bob ahead of time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, the, I did speak with the moderator today and he is going to, he apparently had talked to Mr. Foley. They're going to do social distance distancing again in terms of placing the, the chairs. Uh, and, um, hold on, we have to admit this mark of here. They're going to do social distancing and uh, while he's not going to try and mandate masks, we're going to pass them out to people who come in and don't have one.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Right.
And then of course, the question will come up with Eva as well. How does she feel about the following Monday? And then, of course, a question will come up with Eva as well. How does she feel about the following Monday?
Right, the election. That extra.
Exactly. Fortunately, there's no question on, you know.
Yeah.
There's no question on the warrant, so that's gonna take too long in terms of counting.
So, speaking of Monday, are we meeting Tuesday that week? Or are we just gonna skip the week?
I, I would say, honestly, with no selectmen race, I don't see why I'm not meeting Monday.
Yeah, we'll meet Monday.
Yeah, right.
Well, where are we gonna meet though? Cause they'll do the counting in there, where we normally meet.
Oh, that's a good point. I wanted a Zoom meeting, yeah.
You wanna meet in the selectmen office?
Yeah, with our billions of followers, just like Instagram.
I hope we can pack them all in there. I think we'll just meet in the selectmen's, that'll be two weeks from now. We can see what the situation is. We need to change, we can change it.
We can also set up in Melville.
Yeah, okay. Alright, let's just plan to meet on the sixteenth and then we'll, you know.
Yeah, do you have to move a lot of stuff over to the, um, to Thornton Burgess for my, next Monday, Bob?
The monitor and the other equipment that we have, uh, the owl and, uh, the, the microphones.
Um, s- speaking of setting up for town meeting, um, are we doing the projector thing again? Cause if we do, I think maybe we should ask the school if they have a bright projector, because I know they use them there for strategic planning. And I just worry that the one we had, people couldn't really see it from the back of the room.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're used to using it too.
They would know how to use it, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any things, and this gets back, I wanted to bring this up in terms of our standard meeting. And I think this is probably true for conservation and planning as well. I think we need to have a better way that people who are attending meetings can get the information to Bob so we can screen share it ahead of time. Whether it's the Mitchell report, whether it's, um, site plans for conservation or planning or something like that. It's much more, I mean, we got the technology, we really should be stepping into it at that point. You know, that there's a way that they, if they have a site, look at the subdivision request for, um, Chapin. You know, we wanna put that on the screen, let people know, we say subdivision, but it's not a real subdivision. Don't worry, it's really just seven lots on the road. Don't be scared by the subdivision word. And visual goes so much better. I think we really need to press hard on getting that ability to get more information into the screen on our Zoom meetings.
I think we, there's a way to do that and we can just simply get the message out to, uh, the various boards and committees and as well as others and say, if you wanna be on the agenda, we're gonna need an electronic file.
Exactly.
Yeah, we store everything on the OneDrive now within folders, so it shouldn't be hard to navigate between the documents.
Yeah. It's, I just feel bad for people, you know, they look down, they see a board looking over all their papers. What are they looking at? Is there a way? No, is there a way, just like, you know, and put the Mitchell thing up and things like that? Is there a way to share as much as possible?
Mm-hmm.
Who sends?
Right.
I think, John, I think we're all set for the town meeting.
We're gonna skip over the ARPA state, uh, Action Ambulance. Bobby, you have a report on that?
I did speak with the mayor of Holyoke and I spoke with the owner and president of the ambulance company, because there was, starting with, uh, Mike Rowaka, uh, the owner and president of Action Ambulance, cause there was a rumor that he was going to sell uh, his company. I called him and we spoke for about fifteen minutes and I don't expect that he would be telling me, uh, if he was going to sell. But he certainly strongly denied that he had any plan whatsoever or has had any involvement in any effort to sell the company. And, uh, you know, I, more than that, I don't think I can tell you, but I was convinced that, that, that there was not an effort underway to sell. Secondly, I did, because we were advised that, um, Holyoke was out to bid and that if, uh, Holyoke decided to go with a different company, that that would affect the workforce of Action Ambulance and ultimately affect uh, the service in Hampton. Uh, we, in fact, we were in a discussion at one point with some employees of Action and they said that the pattern in the industry is if the contract changes and a different company got the contract, the typical pattern would be that the new company would hire on the employees of the old company. Uh, so anyway, I, I, I spoke with the mayor and he said that, uh, he is systematically bidding all contracts uh, for the city of Holyoke. And although he didn't say that they were going to re-up the contract with ambu- with Action, he did say that they were very happy and pleased with the service that they were getting. So I would be surprised if they ended up contracting with a new company.
Did they say they're gonna make the decision, Bob?
Incidentally, uh, I think that's gonna be relatively soon. I've also been told that uh, there were no other bidders and that the city of Holyoke actually had to make a few calls to get, um, some local companies in the western part of the state to submit bids, but none of the big companies that are based in eastern Massachusetts uh, and in central Massachusetts submitted bids.
Don, when do you think we should start? I mean, we're up next year. In the fall, we start kicking around again.
Start looking, yeah.
Let's go through, do, do diligence.
Yeah, yeah.
Same thing for the, uh, trash contract as well.
Yeah, yeah. Cash dresses up next year too.
Uh, I think, I think, I think it's generally in the interest of every community to bid all the contracts regularly.
Sure.
Capital needs town hall. We're gonna skip over that this evening.
Skip that, yes.
And green communities will skip that as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and selectmen's reports?
Uh, going forward, I mean, we're still on track for this month. I believe delivery of the building, Bob, that's what we heard from, uh, you, you coordinated with that, so that part's good. Quick report on what happened on Saturday. We had the annual, if you will, or even biannual, I guess. Town cleanup, great response from people. A big thank you to Heather Joliker and Amy Billadue on their efforts. Uh, there was the, and that guy from up the road and his son appeared in the picture. That was pretty good.
Oh, yeah. But again, for him, it's, it's a photo op, it's a photo op.
Well, he has a drone following him as he picks up stuff as well.
Picked up a lot of trash, trust me.
Yeah, true. But again, we look forward to, we're gonna have the one again in the fall. It's a different name. What is the fall name?
Uh, trash retreats.
Trash retreats, there you go. So and again, just great participation, people in town. I just, uh, was surprised how many people showed up, beautiful day. And look for, just that type of town participation. Again, going back to Don, we need to coordinate with the V W.
Yeah.
On the upcoming plans for Memorial Day as well.
Yeah, I saw that. We'll put it on the, on the agenda for the sixteenth, I think.
Please, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Greg, everything?
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, strategic planning was supposed to happen this week. It got postponed, so our next date is Wednesday, May eighteenth. Um, Wilbraham Regional Dispatch is hosting a Donuts with Dispatch on May twenty-first at, um, the Bagel Nook. I think, I think Tony's on, he might be able to give a little bit more info of what that's about.
Yep, I'm here. Uh, so when we started, uh, the regional center, I, I've always wanted to reach out, have a reach out with, uh, the community of Hampton just to show that, you know, we're here, we're local. Any questions, concerns that, uh, come up, you know, I want people to reach out to me or my staff, and I figured the, one of the, a, a good way to meet the community would be to have, uh, an event like this at a local business. So I called, um, the manager, owner of, uh, the Bagel Nook and they were more than happy to host. So we'll have it at the twenty-first between ten and noon. Um, I'll have myself and a few staff members there. We can answer questions, concerns and, uh, show you what we do and you know, I think it's gonna be a great event for, uh, everybody to come on and talk with us.
That's the twenty-first, Anthony?
Yep, twenty-first. I believe it's a Saturday.
Saturday.
To noon, yep.
What, what times?
Uh, ten AM to noon.
Into noon, okay. Alright. Excellent, thank you.
Yep, I actually have, uh, one more thing if I could. Uh, earlier in the week, we had a, a, a critical call in the town of Hampton um, involving a firearm. I can't really get into too much of what the call was. However, our staff handled the call, um, very well, very professionally. Um, it's a type of call that no telecommunicator or dispatcher wants to get. And of course, we, we took that call, uh, professionally. Kelsey Green was actually the call taker, one of the call takers for that. And I just wanted to put out that she did an extraordinary job with this type of call, uh, getting the resources there and following up, um, for a few hours after the, the call came in. So I wanted to thank her for her, uh, her great work for that call.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Tony. It goes to show what you guys do over there too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and I, uh, I'll have the first superintendent's screening committee meeting on Wednesday and Thursday this week, and then three meetings next week. And the final meeting will be on the thirteenth, and then we'll have some recommendations at that point, I guess.
Lot of meetings there.
Lot of meetings, alright. Uh, town administrator's report?
Well, um, the Shared Health Services Steering Committee had its last meeting, final meeting last week. Um, the system is underway. Uh, we were notified that we're being funded for the second year by the state. And, uh, also the health director, uh, has been in town hall in Hampton regularly. He was there today, in fact. And so far, we think the system is operating, uh, very well. Uh, we are now also, uh, setting up, and this, this, the shared system involves Long Meadow, Wilbraham, Hampton and Monson. Uh, we are also moving down the road with the new shared services group uh, looking to have a shared conservation agent. Uh, same kind of process. We're not sure that we're gonna get state funding, but nevertheless, uh, I think all the communities, uh, have, have had experience in trying to recruit someone who's skilled and trained to do this work and have been frustrated because, uh, those folks who are trained and have these skills, A, are looking for full-time work and B, uh, are hard to find in this part of Massachusetts. Um, secondly, my time this week was spent mostly, uh, finishing up the motions and the summaries, uh, for our annual town meeting. Uh, and then, um, getting that, uh, good order. There's a lot of details involved there. Um, and, uh, lastly, uh, the first report for those communities that are receiving ARPA funds was due on April the thirtieth. And, uh, as you might expect, there's a fair amount of bureaucracy. Twenty-six pages of instructions. I actually had to read them, I think, three times to understand them, um, in order to be able to file the thing permanently and, uh, so, but I got the report in on time, and so I don't expect trouble from the federal government. Um, and, uh, we are, we are not aware at this point of communities the size of Hampton are gonna be required to report quarterly or not, hoping not, but, uh, because it does consume a lot of time and, uh, uh, it'd be better if we could, uh, extend the reporting period to maybe every six months. And that's, that's the report.
Anything else to come before the board? Our town meeting, May ninth, seven PM, Thornton Burgess. Anything else to come before the board? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you all, be safe.